Your council meeting to order, we only have one agenda item. I guess we probably need to call the roll for the record. Yeah, just call the ones that's here.
Councilman Lovesey.
Here.
Councilman Carter.
Here.
Councilman Edmondson.
Here.
Councilman Culpepper.
Here.
Okay, I will note that we do have a quorum. We only have one issue to discuss, and that's the Charter Review Commission recommendations. We want to give Nancy an opportunity to be able to prepare an ordinance for next Monday. And I listened to the audio while we were in California on the meetings you had last Monday. And there were some issues from the recommendations that council wanted to discuss further. And as you know, that we could submit their recommendations as presented. But we can also alter or offer amendments to those because the report came in after the time period to where we would have to submit the report, and Nancy can correct me if I'm incorrect. So that's the purpose of tonight's meeting, are there recommendations that you want to discuss to see if the council wants to make any changes to it? Any of you?
Uh, Your Honor, one of the things that I would like to talk about is the, when we have a situation where a vote is taken and we have the minority voting for or against, and having to wait two more weeks to bring a project back for a second vote on the first reading to the second reading. And I have, to me, that's postponing and making a developer or a person wait two weeks unnecessarily because I don't see that if a person is voting, they are not going to change their mind two weeks later.
That's on page 18 of the document that you have. Under procedure, except in the case of emergency ordinance, every proposed ordinance shall be read by title in open council meetings. Two times before passage, the readings may occur at the same meeting if approved by unanimous roll call vote of the city council. That's the part?
Yes.
That you're referencing?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. You would like to see that particular part removed?
I, I have a problem with waiting someone, or asking someone to wait two additional weeks when their outcome is not going to change.
Okay. Any other comments from the council on that? Do you like to make a motion to remove that section?
I would so move, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, this unanimous. See, that was unanimous of the four that are here. Okay, so we will remove that part from it if approved by unanimous roll call vote of the city council. Are there other sections?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to talk about the entire section, which basically makes the mayor part of the council. When we were in the last meeting, and I asked Brian about this, about separation of powers. And Brian essentially said, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, that, that the mayor really has no power outside of a few things here and there, that essentially it's the council that has the power. And I would disagree because the mayor has the appointment power at several different points, also has the bully pulpit, if you will, and sets the agenda for what we do. I think what we had talked about doing was allowing the mayor to vote. I think the first discussions we had on it were let the mayor vote where he felt appropriate. And I guess we've moved to the mayor voting on everything. And I just wonder if we have to go so far as to make the mayor a part of the council. And maybe I'm completely wrong here, but I just, I don't like blending the executive and the legislative branches here of our government. I mean, you said to me early on when I did this, that you looked at the way we're constructed as, you're the chief executive officer.
By charter.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And city manager is the chief operating officer with day-to-day oversight of the city government. And I get that, and I understand that. And I just feel like we're, we're blurring that line.
And Brian, would you like to, you're, and again, I want to thank the Charter Commission members for being here this evening because you put a lot of time and effort. And one of the things, and everybody in here knows it's maybe for the report, is when we decided, based on the charter, to appoint the Charter Commission, we wanted to make sure that we had good participation. So we had, I asked for recommendation from each council member. So that made it six people, and I chose a person from each one of the districts to make it nine, so we would have fair representation throughout. So anyway, and I listened to the audio of what Brian had said too, and I'll let him speak to that issue because what I heard him say was that it's different than being the governor or the president, to where you actually have departments reporting to you. In this particular case, as mayor, I have nobody reporting to me as far as department heads. They have no control, their city administrator has all that power. And, and also, Brian, as you address this, and I know Mary had her hand up too, I know in Kansas City and in Independence, the mayor does vote, and I'm not sure how that's constructed. I have no clue. Brian, would you?
Yeah, I think to your first point, and I think we stated it also last week, I mean, you, I thank the council and the mayor for putting an amazing list of citizens who spent hours and hours and hours working on this. Had numerous open meetings with the public. People came and attended, watched what we did. Had Councilman Fowler came to several of our meetings. I thank him for his input. And our own Mary Potter has been here through every single iteration of the charter, so we got some background of that. So here's what we decided, and here's what was decided, in fact, very early in the process. And, and the public comment was, on this has been accepted, and we asked for public comment on the mayor to have a right to votes from the very, the very first meeting and there on. And here's what the idea was, two reasons we did it. One, is that under our charter, we don't have an executive. The executive is actually the city administrator, so there's no political accountability to the executive. The mayor is not the executive of the city. And I think if you went and asked most of the public in our city, I think they thought that the mayor's the one making all the decisions, and that's not true under our charter. Sometime, and remember my last slide, I think we'll get there as our city continues to grow. I think we're going to have to have a full-time mayor as our city continues to grow. And at that moment in time, we will have a mayor that becomes the executive officer. And then that, at that time, the mayor should be removed from the council. That way you can have some true separation of powers. But here, under our current charter, the mayor doesn't have power. And I remember, and I've seen lots of mayors campaign for office, I've seen a lot of mayors go out and give speeches. And the idea that a mayor can institute change in this city, other than through the, through what we call sort of anecdotal, these bully pulpits, is just simply not true. So what we did here is we said, Mayor, we can do this in two ways. One, we give the mayor a chance to be a greater participant in the process of what, and greater say in what happens in our city. And second, if you remember, the backdrop to all of our conversations was accountability. And I know, and I look around, and I see my Charter Review members here in this room, and we really wanted a greater accountability. And on many issues, folks in this city wanted to know where the mayor stands. And they don't have that. In any roll call vote, you don't know where the mayor stands unless he or she would cast a tie-breaking vote, the tie-breaking vote. So now, the good news is, there's some greater political accountability. We know where the mayor stands, and it also gives us, gives us, and gives the citizens a better chance to say, our mayor can effectuate change better. So, but I think the next Charter Review Commission, which I'm sure Mary will be on it, I don't know about anybody else.
(laughing).
Will, will, will address that issue, and will really have to, have to wrestle with the issue on whether or not we want an executive. And Mr. Carter, I think I'd like your input too on that as well. But I think at this moment in time, we've said, let's make sure the accountability of having the mayor's vote stated, and then we'll also give him or her, whoever the mayor is, a greater participation in the process.
Brian, I've got a couple of questions on that. And I appreciate the standpoint of making the mayor more accountable. And admittedly, on this particular topic, I was privy to some of the conversations you guys had, I kind of tried to keep up with it. But I, I am still kind of on the fence, and I think I just share some of the concerns that Dale has communicated. But two things that I think would help me is, A, you talk a lot about as the city gets bigger, and, and I see where you're coming from of that, of having the mayor kind of be the elected executive. But on, just kind of compare that to what Kansas City does. I mean, it's a city of almost half a million, and it seems like they're still in the position that we're trying to go to now. They don't quite have a strong mayor in that sense that actually does the day-to-day operations. They still have the city manager position. And then secondly, along with that, while the mayor would have more accountability in this, in this new model, my concern is more from the other standpoint. The mayor now can sort of act as a collaborator and go to, say, a developer and say, you know, I'm just here to facilitate the process, go to the council and say, I'm just here to make sure the process is smooth. Once he takes a position, then he almost loses credibility to go to those people he's opposed and say, let's communicate, let's come to some common ground. If he's already on the record in that sense, then does that remove his ability to be a neutral party that brings the process to culmination? And I don't know that I necessarily am one way or the other, I'm just wondering for discussion, what are kind of your thoughts on that?
I hear you. And I think, and it's a great question, Chris, and I think what you'll see is that when I was the Speaker pro temp, the Speaker of the House, the Senate Majority, they're all going to have opinions, and they're going to help drive consensus and change, even in spite of their opinions. They know this. And no matter what happens, they have to get the person on board who's the executive officer. They have to get the governor of the state of Missouri on board. And the city of Kansas City example, while we looked at that, I never want to model ourselves after the city of Kansas City. We're much, much better than that, but, so that was never a model for us. But, but, but I think, but I think what we, I think, I hear what you say is that, you know, in our mayor, it would take out the mayor as a neutral on this. And I think the neutral role should usually be played by the administrator. And let the administrator do it, and let the political accountability, because I want to know where my mayor stands. If there's a development coming in, I want to know where my mayor is on that issue. I want to know what my mayor thinks and what my mayor's doing, because I may, I may have some very serious concerns about it, or apprehension and desire to get it in. So no matter how I'm feeling about it, I want to know, hey, where's my mayor on this? Is he working for this, is he working against it? And he or she can use their power to say, hey, I'm against it right now, but here's what you need to do. If you want to come in and build or develop a project in my great city, here are some things you're going to have to do to make it a better project. So I hear what you're saying, and I've never thought of the mayor as a sort of neutral on that, and I've really sort of had them as a driver of it, and a driver of public opinion. But, but I hear what you said, and with this, it certainly takes it, and takes it, takes the mayor position out of a neutral and into more of a driver of change.
So when you're looking at the balance of the two, you think the greater responsibility as far as the discussion you heard was on the more accountability side than the facilitation of the process?
It was, it was, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I hate to step on the toes of any of my, ever the members here, so they're smarter than I am. If you guys have anything to say, or I misstate, jump in, please. Jack, I know you've got a lot, your leg's working and everything. You want to say something, buddy?
Dale, I understand.
You got to use the mic, I think, Jack, I'm sorry. It's only, they're doing the radio, or they're putting this up on the.
Maybe we can bring you a handheld.
Dale, I understand how you feel, because I wrestle.
It's on?
Oh, okay. Third time. I understand how you feel, and wrestled with the same question. And, you know, what it comes down to is you have to look at the roles of who's doing what. And sometimes people get a little confused, it seems, between the city manager and the mayor. The city manager is apolitical. They just, you don't really need, they're not taking any side. Their job is to operate, to run the city. And so in terms of what you were thinking, Chris, that's the way I look at it. But as far as accountability, and everyone in here who's elected is accountable. And so part of it is, you got to, got to be able to say, where are they? Where, where, where do they stand on it? You know, we know where, Jeff, we know where you stand on things, Chris, we know where you stand, Dale, and so forth. But, you know, the mayor, that's all part of it too. They get to, they get to be accountable. I think the biggest part we wrestled with then after the accountability was in how to deal with the veto. And that's, that's where we spent a lot of technical time trying to hassle out through there, and I think we spent far more there than anywhere else.
Can we pass up Mary? Thank you. Okay, I'll stand up. I'm going to say ditto there, Chris and Dale, because of the fact that right now, and this is what I hear a lot in the public sector, is that we don't know where the mayor stands. The mayor never has to vote. We know what vote Chris made, we know what vote you made, Dale, but we never know, or almost never, know where the mayor is. And again, if we have, to address your other question, if we have a development come, in all probability, the councilmen in that district that it's going to be in are involved, so that that developer knows where they stand in support or helping them get it through the correct way. And the mayor has to also make that kind of a, he has to let that developer know also. So, and if he stayed neutral, he couldn't do that. But the whole thing, idea behind it was, is the public out there really does want to know where the mayor stands. And granted, when we get larger, and believe me, we looked at the Lee Summit and the Independence charters, specifically this section on how they had their council set up in relationship to their mayor. And I would say, if anything, it's helped Lee Summit's development. I'm not so sure about, I think, Independence too, in a broad stroke way. But that was why, and I hope that answers your questions.
I'm going to go to Dale, but let me make a comment here. Because of sunshine, I cannot be in a meeting with more than two council members at a time. And I've been in meetings with most of you, like on a two-on-two basis. And I can't speak for future mayors, but most developers know where I stand because I'm not shy about letting people know where I stand. But the public don't know. The only way the public will know where I stand on it, if it's a tie vote. Now, here, here's another danger, and this is a real case, but I'm not, I'm just going to give you a scenario rather than a real live case. You have an issue that comes, and especially have to be careful on land use issues. You have an issue come before us, and you have three council members that are convinced it's a good project. And you have two members that's opposed to it. And you have one member that's absent, going that route. It takes the mayor right out of the game. If the mayor supported it, it takes him right out of the game. Whereas with this, the mayor would have a vote to be able to make that decision if the mayor supported the project. So, that's just another one where it's helpful, because it's not going to always be three-three. And then the mayor has an opportunity to vote. Dale?
Well, I was going to say, you know, rarely does anybody not know where you stand on an issue.
Very few people do.
Very few. And there was, there was a scenario, without getting into details, where there was a developer who wanted to come to town and do something that would have been bad for Blue Springs, and you shot it down in a meeting. And I think they got the message loud and clear, and that went away.
Right.
And I find it ironic that you spent a lot of time on the veto, since I don't think you've used the veto since I've been here.
I have not used it since I've been mayor.
Okay. So, I don't know, if that's, it's an issue or not. Has there been a veto?
During my first term, we had a veto.
Okay. I, before we.
You know what I'm talking about.
And, and I get your scenario, and your point's well made, Mayor. And, and I have always wanted you to have a vote, have that position, have a vote on the council. I just want to be very careful before we rip a lot out of our charter, that we look at our citizen survey, and our citizens are very happy with the government, the way it's functioning right now. I worry when we start talking about taking our city manager out of the process, going to a full-time mayor, making substantial changes to the charter, that it may not reflect what the citizens want. And I get that this will have to go on a ballot and have to be voted upon by the citizens.
Right.
I just, you know, I'm not crazy about it, I'll leave it there.
Yeah, now, we're not at that point yet to where you're going to make the mayor, and again, I'm not going to be mayor forever, folks. Somebody else is going to be sitting and sitting in this chair for certain at some point in time. But hopefully, they will understand that, and, and you know, and just want to, just kind of anecdotal side note, although the mayor's a part-time, I put a lot more than part-time into this job. And hopefully, setting a new standard for whoever follows me, that they're going to be able to put the time in, because to be able to be in a city that's progressive, and to be able to have your finger on the pulse of not just this community, but the, this region. Because we're not isolated as just a single community anymore. What affects things in Independence affects us here in Blue Springs, Lee Summit, and Oak Grove. So hopefully, whoever is mayor will be engaged in, you know, at some point in time, but that's not for now. Some point in the future, yeah, that's something that some Charter Review Commission is going to have to consider.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can say one more thing.
Yeah.
Mr. Quabell asked a great question at the last meeting and said, are your changes to the charter being driven by something that's happening right now with the government, with our city government? And the answer to that, and that was a great question, the answer was no. I mean, the citizens' satisfaction surveys, I mean, well, I've read them, we've read them, and to your point, Dale, and I think, and I think, but what we were tasked to do is, how can we make it better? How can we make it more accountable? And that's really, I mean, I mean, Mary had the great backdrop to that, and our driving force was, was not to shake up, because, and trust me, a lot of people came to us and wanted us to fix little things that you guys had done, and we just weren't going to do that. We took a very big picture of this and said, we want our elected, we want you elected officials to make the decisions, and we wanted greater accountability where we could find it. And that was the driving force behind this. And that's really, every decision was made with an eye toward accountability.
Yes, Mary?
To address what Dale just said, I think on the survey, I know how they're made up, I know all of that, but when you ask just the average citizen out there, they think that Mayor votes. They think that's part of why we have a good government, but he doesn't even vote. And if they were trying to figure out what he was really for by votes that are taken, they couldn't find it.
Well, again.
And I think that's where it comes in.
Right. I'm not saying I don't want the mayor to vote.
Okay.
I want the mayor to vote. We've had that discussion many times.
Okay.
I just, the lines are blurry to me now. And maybe I'm overthinking it, overanalyzing it, I don't know.
And it, well, on the part of the veto, we had to address how that would occur because he shouldn't get to veto twice. And so that is why we took that section out. I mean, he either vetoes once with the rest of the council, or he doesn't. I mean, he can't get two bites at that apple if he doesn't like it. So that's probably, was that a question? No, you were okay with that part? Okay.
I'm okay with that because I've never seen it used.
Let me see, how to, I can veto, and then I can also vote to sustain my veto. How about that? Then I've got power. Okay, any other comments on any other sections?
I've got something else, Your Honor.
Chris?
Well, actually, two points. I wanted to clarify, well, I guess it doesn't matter now, based on, we removed that section on Susan, so. The other thing I wanted to at least bring up for discussion, and I'd asked Brian this question at the council meeting about the council or a certain number of the council members being able to put something on the agenda. And Brian pointed out, and, and I took his comment as sincere, that they didn't want to essentially require that the council, how we operate. And I think from a commission standpoint, that's probably a wise decision, because it's not really the commission's role. But this is an opportunity with the review of the charter for the council to essentially put to a vote of the public, whether or not that's something that we would want to abide by. We could essentially make still a part of the charter from a council directive, that a certain number of council members are able to add something to the agenda regardless of the input of the mayor. And so I thought that was something to see if there was interest in that. I, I don't have a specific number in mind, and I'm not pushing for any particular number of councilmen. I think that would be something that should be used rarely, so, you know, to me, it should be a majority of the council, at least four of them, to be able to, as a representation of the whole city. But I thought at least to bring that up for discussion, to see if this is an opportunity, we may put that in the charter as kind of a higher standard, and see where the thought process was, so.
I, I don't know, I don't know about future mayors, but I mean, if you, if I got a lot of councilmen who want something, but, but again, this is not for me, this is for whoever is mayor.
Sure.
That if you had issues that you want brought and put on the agenda, that we'd do that.
Right. And, and as a general rule, as a practice.
And so it hasn't been a problem right now.
The mayor should, if there's an interest of the majority of the council, put something on the agenda. But in the event that there was a more stubborn mayor than you, Your Honor.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe in the interest of representation of the people.
Wait, 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 wait. A more stubborn?
More stubborn, yes. I did not delegitimize the amount of stubbornness that you represent, so.
I, I guess I defer to our, our city attorney there. With this, are we limited to dealing with the sections or recommendations that the Charter Commission made, rather than opening up other areas?
No, the city council can always propose amendments to the charter. But that type of a item about being able to add things to the agenda, what other cities often do, and you all, I don't know how, I'm sorry, I haven't been here long enough to know. But at the beginning of a meeting, if someone wants to add something to a genuine, agenda, they usually move to add something to the agenda. If there's a second, then there's a vote on whether to add it to the agenda, and that's how other cities have gotten things on the agenda. I'll just throw that out as a suggestion, as opposed to whether you want to do it as a charter. You could, you could do it as a charter amendment also.
I, I guess I have a problem with that kind of process, because it doesn't have you, give you the opportunity to vet and have staff take a look and all that to be able to do that. So that part, I would have a problem with.
From a sun sign standpoint, is that even, does that comply?
Well, you would, well, there would have to be notice the clerk's office at least by Friday afternoon before your meeting, that there's a possible agenda item to be added.
Right.
And it's going to have to be drafted, so it's at least going to have to come through the law department, because there's going to be something drafted to put on. So it's not something, usually don't, someone doesn't just show up Monday night and say, here, I want to add it. And even if you did, you couldn't vote on it or do your public hearing because of the sunshine law.
And that's essentially the, the point of me just bringing this up for discussion, because there are, I'm sure, parliamentary mechanisms by which the council could force an issue. But I wondered if this was an important enough topic, when we're talking about the discussion of accountability, if this from the council standpoint is important enough to enshrine in the charter, or whether we just want to continue as a parliamentary process to take that route if that's necessary. And I, like I said, I'm not trying to push this from a strong standpoint, I'm just bringing it up for discussion if there was any interest to take that route, since this is an opportunity to do that.
Brian, do you have some?
Yeah, I know we adjusted last time, and the only additional comment that I'd add since last time is, if you put it in the charter, and there becomes some hubbub about it on whether or not the mayor or the council properly took something up, that a majority of council members did, and there's some construction of what the charter means, then you're going to get the Jackson kind of courts involved, on what items ought to be on your agenda. And so I thought it was much easier for me to say, let's just get rid of that mess. Could be the full, full Lawyer's Employment Act piece, but, but I just felt something like that, I just want to get rid of, and get that out of the purview, and to say, and if you guys create a set of rules, and I would frankly, and, and Mr. Mayor, I mean, you know this as well as I do, I mean, we have a set of house rules that we, that we go by, and that the House makes up, and I would encourage you all to think about doing something that, and it's that where you would find, hey, here's what we're going to abide by. Here are the rules we're going to set, and then at the beginning of every year or three years, you can set, revisit those rules just as we, as the House did. And then it's all under your control then at that point, you get the courts out of that whole mess, and then, but, but listen, I think you've got a great point. I mean, I, I like the idea. I mean, listen, if I'm on the council, hey, I mean, take it to the absolute extreme, what if six of you all want something on there, but the mayor won't put it on the agenda? I mean, how frustra, I can't imagine the frustration if you've got a driving city sentiment, six of you all unanimously agree to something, you've got, you know, unlike this one, a future stubborn mayor that would say, wouldn't, wouldn't put it on there. I mean, I can imagine the frustration. So I'm trying to envision a loophole, and, and so, and in the House rules, we have the same, we have the same idea too. So it's just something to think about, but that's the reason we didn't put it in.
You're not interested in that.
But I don't necessarily disagree with you. I can't stand up here and say you're dead wrong, but it's just something we felt just didn't belong in the charter. But it's just something we felt just didn't belong in the charter, but if you were to add it to the charter, you were to do something, I mean, I'm not gonna cry about it, you know? But, but I, but that's generally what we were thinking, but.
You're not interested in that job security, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm good. I let you guys do your work.
All right, and from a, from the commission standpoint, I think that, that was a wise choice to stay out of the weeds of that. And, and again, I was just wondering if that was something that, because there's that possibility that we, there's not just the formality and just the general understanding that this is how it works, if it was an important enough concept to put in the charter, that this would be the time to do it, because it's ten more years before it can even be brought up again, so. I'll leave it at that.
There, there is a point that I want to, he did not say more.
He did not, I did.
Yeah, you said.
I made a mistake.
I wanna, wanna make sure we. Oh, okay, any other, any other? I can't.
If you don't mind, and, and this is probably not towards Brian or the, or the commission, it's, it's a point of information or concern I have, and that is under the qualifications, both for the mayor and for the council. Uh, it appears under the mayor under four point two. Uh, council is three, three point three. And it basically says that, that no city councilman shall be delinquent in paying federal, state, county, or Blue Springs. And that the changes, uh, income tax, personal property, or sales tax, the changes is that it used to be you, you had to be current on your Blue Springs.
Right.
To serve. And, uh, my question is, and, and I'll address this to the city attorney and, and Christine, how are you going to enforce that or monitor that, given the efficiencies of our state, federal government in reporting back? I'm being really nice about that. Uh, to me, I'm thinking we're putting something in there, and maybe, Brian, I, I, again, I don't mean to leave you out, and if you've got something on here, but maybe in there, are we trying to be, create more problems than, than we need to with this by adding these things in? So I, I, I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor, if I can address that question. Uh, and here's what we did, when you file for state office, you sign an affidavit. And then to that, there's no digging into it, you don't have to sign a request for your IRS, your city records, but you do have to sign an affidavit under the penalties of perjury that you are current in all of these, in all of these taxes. And so, and that's the same affidavit, and I've signed it. Um, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if they had it when back when you were in the state.
I don't remember.
It would've been close, it would've been right around the time when you were finishing and I was, I was starting, so. Long, long, long time ago, and, uh, but you do have to sign an affidavit. And, and people have been thrown off the ballot because of that. Uh, because of that, because either they're unwilling to sign the affidavit, or they later on find something that isn't true. So the city office and the city management would be at the beginning process. And the idea behind it was, is that there was a lot of concern among council members of that, hey, what happens if your check to the water bill gets lost or something? Are you all of a sudden forfeiting office because of that? And I think based upon my reading of the charter, may even true, and no one ever intended that. And we, I get that, so we wanted to make it real clear, here's what we mean. And so, and I don't think anybody should go digging into your personal finances and to go start looking at your records. So that's why at the beginning, when you file for office, what I envision will happen to be the same thing that, that every state office holder fa- assigns is this, is a, is a, an affidavit that says they're current on that.
And here you, I'm, not to offend Brian, you're a great guy. I just, sometimes I see, from what I'm looking at this, it seems like we're coming from state policy, trying to come down and, and bring that down into the city policy. And to me, that's maybe overcomplicating for a city. I, I, just my opinion on that. An affidavit is fine, but if, if you prove something wrong, does that mean you have to get, you know, do you have to get a lawyer, go to court? I mean, to force this, how far does that go?
Here's what usually happens, here's how it's come up in the past. You'll sign an affidavit when you file for office that says I'm current in all my taxes. And then usually how it's first notified is the Department of Revenue, there's a, they, they will have a public filing where there's a lien. And they're gonna say, hey, listen, and I'll just use me as an example, so hey, listen, Brian, you've got a lien on here, you sign an affidavit that says you did it, you're not qualified to be on the ballot, and then I can deal with the election authorities on whether or not I'm qualified to be on the ballot. But I think everybody in the city expects their council members, there's just a level of accountability to be up to say, up to date on all those taxes. And this is a, this is a meaningful way to do it without being too much of a burden on your finances. And like I said, it's only gonna pop up when usually something is a public filing. If the city files a lien, or the state files a lien, or you get a federal lien, is the only time it's ever come up. And it's not intended to be anything greater than that, so I would expect the city attorney to go in and really almost craft the same affidavit they do for the state, and then you're done, and you just sign it. I signed it every time, signed it every time, it's a publicly available document once I sign it. And, and then it just says, hey, there's just a level of accountability. But listen, don't worry, you're not gonna go in by doing, by signing that, you don't sign away the right of anybody at the city or anybody in the public to go have access to your personal record, you don't. But you do have to make sure your taxes are paid.
Okay, so I guess my other question is this, it would be real quick, is that we file in December, if you choose not to pay your property tax until the very last moment. Again, uh, I'm, I do this from my side of it, small business owner, I have a huge property tax bill that comes due at the end. It may be right beforehand, before I can go in and make that payment on that. That could be a detriment that may be somebody wanting this position because they're on their position where, okay, when I file, I've gotta put up a huge chunk of money.
You don't, you don't, either your taxes are due December thirty first. And when you sign that affidavit in early December when you file, and you say I'm current on your county taxes, you are current on your county taxes.
Okay.
Because the previous year, you paid on the thirty first.
Okay.
So you're, they're not due, you don't have to pay your taxes early, no way.
Okay.
But you just have to be up to speed on it, you know? And so, and that's, that's all you have to be, up to speed on it, and I, I'm like you, I try, I try to keep my money as long as I can. You should pay on December thirty first.
Yep.
And so, and, and, but, but when you sign your affidavit in early December, you're good.
Okay.
You're good, because you're up, you're up to date.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Let me give you another example to think about on this. Uh, and I've had it happen a, a couple of times over the years, again, as a small business owner. There are times at the federal level where you are not prepared to file your taxes on April fifteenth. So you file an extension. At the time of your extension, you estimate what your taxes are, you make that payment. You're signing a, an affidavit that you're not delinquent. When you end up filing your taxes, lo and behold, your estimate was off. And guess what? They still hit you with the penalties when that happens. Technically, you were delinquent, you just didn't know it at the time. Now, I understand the under penalties of perjury thing. And frankly, at that level of taxation, there aren't websites you can go out to and, and check. But I like to be very precise on how we define these terms. Technically, in years where that's happened to me, I would've been delinquent and just not known it. And I'm not sure when you get, I'm not sure when you get, uh, into a court, if somebody were to actually make an issue of that, that you might not have some risk of being accused of committing perjury, even though you didn't.
I, I think, I think you're okay in a couple areas, so I'm with you. I'm self-employed myself. I work at a big law firm in Kansas City, and I'm a self-employed, and I make estimated taxes throughout the year as well, just like I know you do too.
Oh, yeah.
And we make our payments on the, on the fifteenth. Uh, I'm not afraid of asking for an extension and paying a good faith belief in what you owe. And that's what the difference is, and that's why, I bet you've never done it, but I may, you may have had a friend that did that. They've never been charged for that. You pay your penalty, you pay that, you've never been charged for that, because you made a good faith belief. Now, you're gonna pay a little price, and you're gonna pay a penalty and interest for that. But you made a good faith belief. And your affidavit was based on a good faith belief that you're up to speed on your taxes. So, but if you're paying four dollars of estimated taxes on your income, and you're way, way off that, someone could probably make it, make it better, make it, make something, make some hay of it. But the reality to it is, is that if you do that, you're probably gonna get, end up charged by the IRS, there's gonna be a public filing by the IRS, and then you can, then you can account for that. But be aware of this. If you commit perjury, I, there's nothing I or anybody in this room are gonna be able to do about it. That would go to the Jackson County Prosecutor's Office or to the Department of Justice, and they're gonna make a decision on whether to file charges against you for perjury. There's not a civil claim that I can do that. So, so that's what the distinction's gonna be on this, but I would bet in most people's cases, in the va- in ninety-nine point nine percent of people who underpay their estimated taxes, there's not a later IRS lien against them or a public filing by the IRS that says they're late. They pay their penalty because it's a good, based on a good faith belief of what their taxes are gonna be. You're wrong, but it's based on a good faith belief.
Okay.
So just to advance this conversation, I'm just deferring to you guys. Would, what would make this more palatable from that sense? Just taking out the federal taxes? Or just leaving it as it is, and what, what's kind of the thought in making this? What your concern is? If we just remove the word.
I'm not sure I'm even suggesting that we not do this, I just threw it out for discussion because it is a scenario that can happen.
I would encourage you to leave it as it is, and you've got a tried and true mechanism in the past that it works. It works and has provided accountability, and it's taken people who, who don't pay their taxes out of politics at the state level. It works. It's accountability, and we're not creating something out of whole cloth here. And I think just a basic sense of accountability, this is what you would want in your future elected leaders who sit, who are gonna later on sit in your seats, and it's what people are gonna want of you all, also in those same seats.
Okay, since I kinda brought this up, I'm sorry, go ahead, if you want to talk. Okay. I guess I look at it from, in this position as a councilman, I control tax dollars that are collected for the city. I don't control tax dollars at the state level, I don't control tax dollars at the county level. And I don't control tax dollars at the federal level. So my accountability, to me, seems more on the local level than it does county, state, or federal. So since I kinda brought it up, to me, it'd be better to maybe eliminate that. I mean, I'm gonna go with what the group says, I, I have no issue with that part of it, other than I just think it seems like we're getting more grandiose here than, than what I think needs to be done. And that's just my personal opinion on it.
Do you wanna put that in form of a motion?
Um, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, that you remove, that you leave it as it is today?
Move federal, state, and county out of there, and just stay with what we had before, Blue Springs.
Okay, now, as, as, as you, and there are some sections that follows Blue Springs, talks about income, personal property, sales, da, 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 da.
I would.
So is your intent just to leave it as it is today and remove all the added language?
Um, we could leave in income, personal, well, you can pay in. Yeah, I would say go back to what we had before, other than I would like to leave in the convicted part of the felony.
Are you following this, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So you got, you.
What you wanna just have is to say Blue Springs taxes. Do you want the fees out for the late water bill? Which, by the way, there's a state statute just, just goes into effect August twenty eighth that takes fees out anyway. So this would just make that consistent with this new state statute.
So that's, that's what I, that's my motion.
Okay, that's his motion. Is there a second on his motion?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, is, okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
No, the only thing I was going to, to say is that when I have filed for office, I have had to provide a copy of my paid taxes in Blue Springs. I mean, I had, when I filed in Blue Springs, I had to provide a copy, it wasn't an affidavit, I had to provide a copy of that paid.
Right, right.
Tax, so.
I think the reason we have to do that is because there's a Blue Springs component.
Right.
To those taxes, even though you might exclude county here.
Now, now, this motion has two sections in it, and you got that, Nancy, to make it consistent. The mayor is separated from the council. And, and when you make these changes, because the mayor's sections say that you have to pay.
The same wording.
Has the same wording, so you'd have to make it consistent for both of them. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Roll call it, so we can know.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Okay.
Unanimously.
Okay, so it's unanimous, so that part has been removed, and Nancy has the language. Any, any other sections?
For clarification purposes, since you brought up the qualification of the mayor, I'm assuming that since we, if we go through and the mayor has the same, it states there, the same, uh, rights or whatever as councilman, this would overflow into that section two.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Well, unless you tell me.
Section four point two will come out.
Yeah, it's a separate section, and has nothing to do with them being a, having a privilege of being a council member. So actually, to remove it from the mayor, we should just have another motion, not to take that forward.
Do we need to?
Okay, so we need to make it for the mayor's section two?
Section four point two.
Okay.
Then I would like to make that motion the same for, for four point two, too.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, okay. Any other sections we need to address?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I apologize for arriving late this evening, I had the time down wrong on my calendar. In asking that question, is there anything else we discussed prior to my coming in already? Or were we primarily focused on the, uh, mayor voting?
We, we did remove the section on the unanimous for the second reading.
Yeah, unanimous new, uh, reading.
Okay, 'cause that's one I wanted to bring up. Did we discuss any others?
No.
Section H, we removed that whole line.
Is there any other sections you'd like to discuss?
Did, uh, did we talk about the, uh, contributions?
The employee part of it? Uh, we did not.
I would like to have at least some discussion on that before we decide whether or not.
Okay, what, what page is that on? What's?
It's twelve point two.
Forty-one? Page forty-one. Okay. Jeff, you're up. Section twelve to.
Well, I, I just wanna reiterate the concerns that I brought up at the last meeting on this. And I, I'm conflicted about it, I don't have a position one way or the other yet, I really wanna hear what everybody else has to say about it. And I understood what Brian told us last time, but I, I remain concerned particularly. Uh, one thing I will say different than last time. Um, as I came in this evening, we were talking about the mayor voting, and there also were comments about sometime in the future that we have to look at, you know, a strong mayor, tough form of government possibly, where the mayor would be, uh, both the administrator as well as the executive, if I understand how that form of government works. Uh, if we believe that our city is headed in that direction, I think the concerns that I have about these changes become even more pertinent. Because in our current form of government, the city administrator is non-political, and he is a shield essentially between the council, uh, and the employees of the organization. So I can see where these changes might make sense. But I, I still have the concern about the ethical problems of allowing employees to do it, although I also recognize, uh, Brian, the potential unconstitutionality of denying them that basic right. But if the, if the chief executive, who they report to ultimately, is the mayor, then you, then you do have a problem, in my opinion, by allowing contributions, because there you have a direct opportunity for a mayor to twist arms and affect people's unemployment. And I think we ought to at least look at that, because if we're beginning a progression to a strong mayor type of government and opening the door for these political contributions by a non-elected employees, I think we need to really think hard about that, because there is a problem in that form of government with these types of, of, uh, these types of contributions. Strictly ethical, I get that, but.
Any comments? Dale?
I share your concern, I'm, I'm uneasy with it as well. I disagree that we are moving to a point where we're going to have a full-time mayor and no city manager. As we said, Kansas City doesn't even have that, and they're ten times our size. And I don't think we should be constricted by what we're doing in this charter review by what we may do in ten years. So while I'm a little uneasy with it, there's also the constitutional issue of it, and there is the shield in place that you mentioned. We're in a very unique position right now with the mayor that we have. I don't know that another mayor like this mayor will come along that has a strong track record of legislative experience, who also happens to be in a position where he can serve full-time. I don't know that we could pay enough as this city to get someone of that quality to serve in that position full-time. So I think that the way it's constructed now is probably the way it's gonna move forward. But that's ten years from now, and who knows what's gonna happen ten years from now. So I'm comfortable with this language, you know, to the extent that I can be.
Any other comments? If not, is there a motion to remove the added language and go revert back to the original? Am I anyone? Did I hear somebody? So, so we're gonna leave the recommended language in? Because I just, I, I, well, 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 well. Well, if, if you're gonna leave it in, you don't have to have a motion, but if you're gonna remove it, you do need to have a. So you're gonna leave, you're gonna leave the added language in?
I'm fine with leaving it in.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it as well, Mayor.
You're uncomfortable, but you want to leave it in?
No, I, I am comfortable with it, I am fine.
With, with the language going in?
As it stands, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Having had the discussion, Mayor, I'm comfortable with leaving it in.
Okay. Anything else? You know, as, as we think about this, if, if the city of Blue Springs ever do, at some point in the future, have a, a full-time mayor, I would imagine the city administrator position then would become the chief of staff. And I think that's what happens in most cases like that, isn't that right, Brian? The person that would be the chief of staff would have those people reporting to them on a daily basis instead of the mayor, which would be accountable to the mayor, so. Okay, is that it?
If I may, Hon- Your Honor, I would like to thank the committee and Brian, especially you. I think you bring a unique flavor to that committee, and hopefully, the next time this comes up, you're around and be willing to do this again.